I would like to call this International Falls Special City Council Meeting to order on Monday, June 23rd. Year is 2025, 5:31 PM. Please rise and we will say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
It can be noted for the record that all members of the council are present this evening. We can move to new business. Several items on the agenda this evening. The first, would like to invite our city engineer, Jason Fisher, forward with his recommendation for a mill and overlay, which I will let you explain, Jason.
Sure. Thank you, council councillors or mayor councillors. We did have a bid opening today for the Stenberg addition and the library and city hall parking lot. We only had one bidder and he was over the engineer's estimate. The bid was for $1,340,098.75. Part of the reason why was we did include some additional work and we also are looking to replace the stairs outside the building officials' door there from that ramp that's there now. So, and those things added to the cost of this project. We, even though it was over engineer's estimate, we are comfortable with this bid. Part of it is the shorter timeframe that they have trying to get it done this summer yet. And so, to cover the overages, we do have some, in the next project that we, that we're going to be looking at was under budget. It came in under budget and we're going to save some of the tax, sales tax dollars that we could apply towards this project to cover the shortfall. So that would be our recommendation is that we do award this project, so.
Thank you, Jason. And just for a moment, oftentimes the council receives this information rather late. So I want to make sure that before, no matter what we do with the project moving forward, that we take our time, that we fully understand where we're at with it. I would like to ask, it appears, even though we have not addressed it on the next item of new business, that the next project comes in significantly under budget. So before we potentially vote on the first item, maybe you could address that.
Yeah, for the Ninth Street project and the lead service line projects on Fifth and Sixth Street, that project did come out, I should pull up to get the numbers, I'm sorry. So, yes, that, that project did come in significantly under budget or under engineer's estimate. And it came in at $6,993,368.45, which was comparable to the other bids we received. They were all, all within that, that range. So we feel comfortable with that bid. And part, part of the funding for that project was sales tax. And we, and we have other funding set up, but we'll be able to use some of the sales tax dollars that we had budgeted for this project that we won't need to use now for this project to help offset the cost of, the additional costs for the parking lot and Stenberg addition.
Thank you, and I know you'll probably have to explain that again, but I just wanted to get it on the record that with the first item, with the mill and overlay and the parking lots being over budget, that there's more to the story later on with that. Would like to ask the council for input.
So it's not going to change, with the two projects told, then we're not going to change what we already have put aside for the projects, correct? So we'll be switching some from one to the other?
Correct, yeah, shift the funding around a little bit. But yeah, I don't still, it'll, all total, both projects will come in a little under what we originally asked to make it.
Floor is open for discussion. If there's no further discussion, a motion can be made.
I will move ahead with Stenberg.
We have a motion by councillor Buller to award this recommendation.
I'll second it.
A second by councillor Holden to support councillor Buller. Discussion is open again. Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, item one is approved unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, new business, item two. Again, with Mr. Fisher, our city engineer, with his recommendation and explanation of the Ninth Street projects.
Yes, the Ninth Street project is the reconstruction project from Third to Eleventh, and then it's a bike trail from, along that whole corridor and going to Fourteenth. So this is a project that we were able to get some assistance on. So we did get a $1.5 million grant from the state of Minnesota for this, for the bike trail portion of this project and for the, the street project portion. So, yes, the engineer's estimate was $8,926,380. And the bid price came in at, the low bidder was $6,993,368.45. So we'd recommend awarding the project to Wagner Construction. So, and this includes not just Ninth Street, but it does include doing some lead service lines, a project that we had bid last year and the bids were higher than we anticipated. So we incorporated that work and we did get better pricing, so.
And many sources and uses to this project that...
Yes.
Councillor Buller?
Is the grant that we have for the lead service lines in this cost?
Yes, yes, that grant will help offset the cost of the Fifth and Sixth Street projects that, those lead service lines, plus the lead service lines along Ninth Street and some of the service lines from the water main to the, to the curb stop, so.
And this probably won't take care of all of our lead service lines, but there is more money after this grant is used, correct?
Currently, there is, yes.
Supposed to be for five years, I think, if I remember right. And I think the feds went to ten years. But anyway, yeah, I just want to make sure that we, that we're, that everybody's aware of that, that it is also for lead service lines. Thank you.
Yep.
And part of the bundling of these services for the lead service lines that we weren't able to do, that I assume the mobilization, all those economies of scale played into...
They did, yes. So this was, it was a successful for us to do that.
Comments or concerns from council? There's no comments or concerns, is there support to move forward with it?
I'll make that motion and move forward with Ninth Street.
Second?
Thank you councillors Buller and Wagner with the motion and support for moving ahead with this recommendation for Ninth Street. Any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, this carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on this evening's agenda is our 2024 audit presentation by Ryan Schmidt of Schlenner, Wenner &amp; Co. Every year, our municipality has its books audited and this evening, the results will be presented by Ryan. Ryan, can you hear us this evening?
I sure can. Can you hear me okay?
Can everyone hear Ryan okay, council? Yes, we can, Ryan, thank you.
Okay, perfect, sounds good. Well, I'm going to share my screen here. As in the past, I do have a PowerPoint presentation to walk through. I believe the, the audited, oh, let's see here. Yeah, can, can you see my, my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So the, the audited financial statements themselves are, you know, over 100 pages long. So I like to use a PowerPoint presentation here to kind of summarize things in more of a graphical format and, and go through a little bit of a trend analysis over the years and kind of hit the high points. So I'm going to walk through that now and if there's any questions along the way, I mean, certainly feel free to interrupt me or, you know, raise your, you know, slay me down or whatever if I don't hear you and, you know, we can, we can address those as they come up. So, all right, so moving into the first slide here. I always like to start out just with a little bit of a reminder and a discussion about what exactly the audit is. You know, what, what are we do, doing during an audit? What is the purpose of the audit? And in a nutshell, you know, the purpose of the audit is for us to review your financial information from throughout the past year, 2024, and look at this information in the form of the financial statements and then express an opinion over whether or not we feel that those financial statements are accurate. So how do we go about doing this? Well, essentially, every number in the financial statements, all of that information, you know, it all comes from somewhere and it comes from various accounts and transactional detail within the accounting system. So what we do is we drill down into that transaction level detail and we look at, you know, the individual receipts and disbursements and, and the supporting documentation that's behind all of those transactions. And that could be invoices, bank statements, you know, payroll records, reports from the state showing the funding that the city received, you know, that sort of thing. And, and we look at that supporting documentation in order to verify the accuracy of all this activity, which then allows us to express an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. So the opinion that we've given you this year is what's called an unmodified opinion. That is a clean opinion and that's what you're hoping to achieve. So in a nutshell, yes, you got that clean opinion. The next slide here, you know, this is basically just some other required communications about the audit itself and, and how the process went. You know, if, if there were problems during the audit with us having difficulty getting the information we needed, or if we saw anything unusual in terms of accounting transactions or just anything, you know, concerning with the process itself, this is where we would tell you about it. In fact, there's a requirement that we do tell you about it. But as you can see, the audit actually did go very smoothly. Both Emma and Betty, you know, working with them, they, they put a lot of effort into preparing for the audit. They're very responsive, they provide everything we need, everything we request. And, and we didn't come across anything unusual in terms of accounting policies or transactions or, or anything concerning along those lines. So everything there was normal and, and good. Now, as part of the audit process, we do also look at your processes and procedures that are behind the numbers. So we refer to this oftentimes as internal controls. So basically, what controls are there in place to make sure that things go the way they're supposed to go? You know, ideally, we live in a world of checks and balances, especially within the accounting world, and we take a little bit of time during the audit and we do look at the controls that are in place. You know, we look at how are invoices and payments approved? And how does the accounting system document journal entries? And how do those get approved? And, you know, how does all of this activity flow through into the accounting system and then eventually get reconciled to the bank statement? So, you know, as we review these, we, we have some internal control related items here that we need to report in the financial statements. And most of these are pretty standard. So the, the first three that I'm going to mention here are basically the, I'll call them the big three that we see with just about every city your size. And the first of these would be audit adjustments. So this is essentially because during the audit process, we assist with quite a few year-end adjustments. And what I mean by year-end adjustments is that, you know, during the year, you're basically recording your cash receipts and disbursements and, and keeping that accurate and up to date on more of a cash basis. And then in the financials at the end of the year, well, there's certain ways that we have to report things to make it comply with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. So some of this means that we have to record year-end balances for things like long-term debt. You know, what are the balances? What are, what do you have for capital assets? What do you have for accounts receivable, accrued payroll? You know, some, some of these balance sheet items. So that's the vast majority of the adjustments, the corrections that we post during the audit are just for these cash to accrual adjustments. Now, the next category here, under internal controls, this would be lack of segregation of duties. And this is by far the most common finding that we give out. Because with a city your size, it's, it's nearly impossible to get away from this finding unless you basically outsource your entire accounting function, which is very, very costly. But basically, what this is saying is that because there's only, you know, a handful of people that are involved with the accounting process, you're not able to fully segregate every piece of the accounting processes to different people and have all of the checks and balances in place that a perfect world scenario would entail. So it's, it's something to be aware of. You know, we, we've never come across anything that's, you know, raised any concerns with us. We've never seen any unusual activity. We do have a requirement to put this in the report simply because of the size of the city and, and the number of people involved with the process. And then at the bottom, in that same category, we have just a, a reminder that we do prepare the financial statements for the city and we're a third party. So whenever there is not an internal CPA, you know, or somebody, somebody internally preparing those financials, there's theoretically a heightened risk that maybe a missing disclosure could go unnoticed or there could be some sort of error in the financials that wasn't identified. So those are kind of the common three. No concerns in, in my mind related to those since they are so common and there's not much of a way to get around them. Now, the, the next one that's noted here, this is a new one we added this year. This relates to inter-fund borrowings. So in particular, this relates to the issue with the ambulance fund and the growing deficit in that fund and the fact that it is borrowing from, from the rest of the city, essentially from the general fund in order to finance that deficit. And the, the reason that this is flagged as a, as a finding in the report is that, you know, it is being accounted for currently as a borrowing, the amount that's being borrowed, indicating the intention to repay. You know, so if it's borrowing from the general fund, then there's inherently the intention that it's going to be repaid. But if there's not actually a, a plan in place or a means of facilitating that repayment, well, then, then we've got a concern with the way that things are being presented. But that's, that's all I'm going to say about that one for now because I do have some slides that are coming up in a little while later in the presentation here where we can take a look at the ambulance fund in a little bit greater detail. All right, next slide here, just a quick thing on our review of your compliance with Minnesota statutes. Since, you know, every, every city that's audited in the state of Minnesota, the state gives out checklists that cover all of the different statutes that we need to take a look at during the audits and basically make sure you're complying with the legal requirements in these areas. So how do you go about contracting and, contracting and bidding? Where do you keep your funds? You know, do you have appropriate investments? Any conflicts of interest, so on and so forth? We didn't have any issues, nothing, nothing we came across looked, looked like a compliance issue to us. So all clean there. All right, with that, we'll move into the numbers a bit here and we'll start looking at the general fund. So the next few slides here focus just on the general fund. Really big picture for starters here. This is the revenues and expenditures each year in the blue and the red over the past five years. And then we do have the budget tacked onto the right-hand side there as well. So really big picture comparison to budget. Revenues did exceed budgeted amounts in the general fund by about $665,000. Then expenditures also exceeded budgeted amounts by about 1.3 million. Now, what I'll point out is this little note I have at the bottom saying that this actually does include expenses that are grossed up by about $300,000. And, and what I mean by that is that there's some budgetary differences sometimes between how we need to present some things in the financial statements versus how your budget gets set up. And we haven't adjusted your budget to fully align with some of these adjustments that we need to make at the end of the year. So the example in this scenario is that you had leases, you had new leases that got executed during the year. And there was a new standard that came out a few years back where basically whenever you're leasing a piece of equipment, we need to account for it just as though the city actually issued debt and then made a purchase. And then you're, and then you're paying off that debt over the term of the lease. So because of that, we need to record an expense for that entire lease upfront. And then there's also a corresponding other, other source. That's this, this other line item here in that table at the bottom. That's, that's like an other revenue that's offsetting. And that's almost as if you've got like the bond proceeds and then you record the full expense right upfront. So that, that is causing a bit of this budgetary difference here. So the actual difference would be closer to about a million dollars. The next couple of pages here break out these same revenues and expenses into a little bit greater detail. So we'll jump into those. So this next page here takes a look at those same revenues from the general fund, but now broken out into smaller categories. So we have taxes, intergovernmental revenues, charges for services, investment income, and then licenses, permits, miscellaneous, et cetera. Really, I mean, across the board, very close to budget in most of these categories on the revenue side of things. The biggest areas where you did have a difference would be under investment income, where you were over budget about $290,000. And then in this final kind of miscellaneous category, here you had insurance proceeds of about $163,000 during the year for the van shell fire and that's where those insurance proceeds fell. Now, the next page here takes a same layout, but a look at the general fund expenditures and once again broken out into smaller categories. So just moving left to right here, I will touch on each of these briefly. General government, here you were over budgeted amounts by about $239,000. Most of this related to the costs related to that van shell demolition along with some other repairs and service costs. The next category here, public safety. Here you were, you were relatively close to budget in the, in the grand scheme of things. I don't have the exact difference, maybe $115,000. But this also does partially tie in with the capital or the other expenditures category here. You know, this gets back to where we reallocate some things on the audit side a little bit sometimes. You know, there, there's leasing costs that we, like I said, we need to treat those leases as though you've issued debt and you're paying for debt. And so when those lease payments are made, most of them are budgeted under this public safety category. But then over into other expenditures, well, we, we have a debt service line item in your financial statements and that's where that fell. So you almost need to take a look at those two in combination because the, the leasing costs were budgeted for, but we reallocated them over into the other expenditures category. Next category here, public works. Here this was over budget by about $360,000. Looked like that was mostly due to landfill flows-out costs of about $260,000 and then various road repairs and maintenance, et cetera. Parks and Rec, pretty close to budget. Same with airports, actually slightly under budget on the airport. Other expenditures I, I talked about here a little bit. Basically, the difference here is just due to those leasing costs that we reallocated. And then capital outlay, this, this is related to that, the, the new leases that I mentioned where on two, two slides ago, where when you issue a new lease, you record all that expense upfront. So I actually wouldn't even consider that to be a real budgetary difference just because that's just one of these things where we need to record it a certain way in order to comply with GAAP and it doesn't quite line up with your budget. Okay, so move on to the next slide here. Every year, we spend a little bit of time looking at this ratio. Still focusing just on the general fund here. And this is looking at the unrestricted portion of your fund balance as a percentage of your annual budgeted expenditures. So this is a, a good ratio to keep an eye on because, you know, over time, the, the expenses of the city grow and, and, you know, the size of the city changes and the amount of essentially reserves, fund balance that you want to have on hand, well, that, that should grow accordingly as those changes happen. So you, you do have a policy in place to have this ratio be at about 50% of your budgeted operating expenditures. So when you, when you take that unassigned portion of your fund balance and divide it by your budgeted expenditures for the year, you're, you're shooting for at least 50%. You can see we've had a little bit of a downward trend in recent years and this is at about 50, just over 50% calculated the way we have it calculated here. I will say if you were to calculate this based on actual expenditures rather than budgeted expenditures, then, then it dips a little and you will be below the 50%. So, you know, it makes a little bit of a difference how you calculate this.
Ryan, do you have that number for actuals?
Yep, I do, it's at 43.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, next slide here. We're going to move away from the general fund for a minute and talk about some of your other funds that, that are considered major funds in the financial statements. And, and basically a fund is considered major if it just has, you know, either larger balances or more activity flowing through it. I'm not going to go through all of the city's, cities' funds because the city has many funds and, and, you know, just in the interest of time. But looking at the major funds here, here we have the EDA general fund and the sales tax fund, both presented. A little graph on the left and then the, the numbers feeding that graph on the right-hand side. The EDA general fund here, revenues essentially consist of the lease revenues coming, coming through from the federal government for the Voyager's National Park facility. And then these leasing revenues are almost entirely just passed along to the VNP debt service fund and the Voyager's National Park operating fund. And that's how you finance that debt and the operations of Voyager's National Park. So overall, after that revenue and those transfers out, you did have an increase in fund balance here of about $367,000 for the year. The sales tax fund, here, your revenues essentially just sales tax proceeds. And then the other sources and uses category here, that is, once again, transfers out to other funds, that was entirely transfers to the 2020A debt service fund, which is being financed by these sales tax proceeds. So overall, we did have an increase in fund balance there of about $413,000 for the year. The next slide shows the cash in both of those funds over the past five years. You can see the sales tax fund has been steadily rising. The, the sales tax proceeds that have been coming through have been exceeding the project and debt service requirements. And then the EDA general fund, that, that's increased the past couple of years as well, up to a balance of about $960,000. Okay, the next couple of funds we'll look at here, the municipal state aid fund and then the permanent improvement fund. So these are both capital project funds that are used to finance various capital project activities. Looking at the MSA fund first, here you had capital... Looking at the MSA fund first, here you had capital outlay expenditures for the year of about $310,000. That was for a project on Seventh Street and Second Avenue. And then this increased your deficit here by about $279,000. So you did have a negative fund balance here of about $897,000 for the year. So similar to how I mentioned for the ambulance fund that we'll look at, you've got a deficit in this fund balance and it's essentially borrowing from another fund of the city. This MSA fund is set up as borrowing from the capital outlay fund. And the distinct difference here in my mind between this fund and the ambulance fund is that there is a dedicated revenue source for the MSA fund. So there's an annual appropriation from the state of Minnesota. You know, I forget exactly how much it is right offhand, maybe somewhere in the ballpark of $300,000. I forget the exact amount. But there is an annual appropriation to the city. And, you know, if allowed to accumulate, that will pay off this deficit over time. The permanent improvement fund, here you had about $2.5 million capital outlay expenditures for various projects, a lot of them water and sewer related. You had the Wistation Number Seven, Tank Two Rehab, Seventeenth Street Water Main, Fifth Street Storm Sewer, et cetera. And then the revenues here are mostly from taxes, and then this year you had some county reimbursements that came through for one of those projects, too. And then you also had an $800,000 transfer into this fund from $400,000 for both the water and sewer funds. I believe the idea there was that so much of these expenses were related to those water and sewer projects, that that was the reimbursement for that share of those projects. So overall, you had a decrease in fund balance here of about $407,000 for the year. And I just have a little note here that, you know, the rest of the funds, if you wanted to look at those in detail, page 95 in the financial statements. All right, and then the cash trend for both of those two funds over the past five years. You can see with the significant capital outlay that you've had over the last couple of years, both of those have been decreasing. Permanent fund cash is down to a balance of about $518,000. And then the municipal state aid fund is at a deficit and borrowing roughly $900,000 from the capital outlay fund. Okay, so the next slide here, you know, so far, we've only been looking at governmental funds. And this slide here kind of looks at the fund balances of all of the governmental funds wrapped together as a whole. And so this excludes water and sewer funds. You know, when I say governmental, I mean funds that are being financed mostly by property taxes, state aids, special assessments, you know, things along those lines. Whereas water and sewer, those are supposed to be more self-sustaining, those are proprietary, those are separate. So looking at your governmental funds here, in aggregate, just the fund balances, you know, there's a few different categories of fund balance. This is basically like your equity, you know, your assets minus your liabilities. But looking at fund balance, there's restricted portions, you know, like the sales tax fund, for example, I believe under statute, that's restricted for certain capital projects. Or, you know, the Voyager's National Park, I think there's some escrows in there that are set aside and formally restricted for a specific purpose. And then there's the unrestricted portion in the blue, which, a portion of this is unassigned and free for day-to-day use, but a lot of this unrestricted portion is allocated out to other funds, you know, the permanent improvement fund, or the capital outlay fund, or, you know, the capital outlay water and sewer fund, or the EDA fund, you know. So this isn't all, what I would say, free for day-to-day use, but it has been set aside at a certain level of city discretion, or, you know, it is, or some of it is completely unassigned and unrestricted. But I thought it was useful to maybe take a look at things big picture, the restricted portion versus the unrestricted, and just kind of look at that trend over the past five years. You can see it has been decreasing in aggregate. You're at about $12 million overall. I would say about half of that is formally restricted, whereas the other half is either committed, assigned, or unassigned, and spread across various funds. Okay, so with that, we'll move into the ambulance fund. I've got a few slides here to talk about that. I think it's the same, the same ones I've presented the past couple of years, kind of looking at the trend of what we've got going here. This first slide is looking at the fund balance trend over the past five years for the ambulance fund. Can see it's had its ups and downs here a little bit, but it is on a downward trend, and you'll see that more so when we look at the, well, I guess I'm not sure, I have a slide here that shows cash, but the cash has been borrowing greater amounts from the general fund as well. So anyway, the fund balance deficit here did increase by $267,000 for the year. So the fund balance deficit is at about 1.3 million, and the cash that's being borrowed from the general fund is at about 1.6 million at the end of the year. Now, the next slide here takes a look at the revenues and the expenditures in the ambulance fund over the past five years, and kind of helps give you an idea of why that fund balance is dropping. 2023 was a little bit of the outlier here because I think there was some extra state aid that came through, and then also a county funding payment. But this year, we were back to having revenues that were below our expenses for the year, and as a result, your fund balance decreased. And then this is that slide where I like to show the general fund, fund balance again, that same ratio we looked at several slides back. And we look at that fund balance percentage, but we look at it if the ambulance fund can't actually repay that cash. So, you know, just as a reminder, fund balance is your assets minus your liabilities. So assets isn't just cash. Assets would be, you know, cash, or receivables, or, you know, different prepaid, maybe, you know, different sorts of assets. And one of those assets in the general fund is a receivable for the amount that's due from the ambulance fund, that reimbursement. So that's factoring into your overall fund balance calculation. And if we pull out that receivable, because we decide that actually the ambulance fund can't repay this, so this receivable doesn't exist, then that drops your fund balance in the general fund. I mean, if you pull out the whole 1.6 million, it drops it considerably. So this is kind of a worst-case scenario slide here, you know, if nothing was repayable, and then you wrote off the whole ambulance fund receivable, this would be where the general fund's fund balance ratio would land at the end of the year. So you'd be at about 27%, which is, of course, lower than what you're looking for based on your policy. Okay, so we'll move on to the water fund. I've got a few more slides here. So this now, as I mentioned, the water funds are enterprise funds or proprietary funds, water fund and sewer are both set up to operate a little more independently. And their accounting is a little different, you know, this, the accounting in the water and sewer funds takes more of a long-term approach. If you look at their financials, it includes capital assets and long-term debt and, you know, all of these more non-current items. But we're just going to focus on operations here. So the graph here is looking at your operating revenues versus your operating expenses over the past five years. And then that corresponds, so that corresponds to the top half of the table down below. So just a comparison to last year, operating revenues were up about $44,000, so pretty flat, and operating expenses were up about $136,000. Now, the non-operating activity really mostly relates to capital asset-related things. So the non-operating revenues and transfers, it's actually recognizing some of these assets from construction projects that were being tracked in your other funds, and then the project gets wrapped up, and then, well, that was a water-related asset, so now we put it into the water fund and we record a revenue, even though it's not really a cash-type activity. And then the non-operating expenses and transfers out, well, that's along the similar lines, you're making transfers out to other funds to help finance some of these capital project things. And there's some other things factored in there, too. But on a net basis, you had an overall increase in your net position for the year of about Now, the sewer fund, same layout here, operating revenues compared to last year increased about $83,000. Operating expenses were also up by about $256,000. A lot of this was due to increased charges from the Kuching area sanitary district. And then the non-operating activity, same explanation that I just talked about on the water fund, mostly related to capital project type activity and recognizing assets and things along those lines. So because of the large assets that were recognized when they were transferred back into the sewer fund, you did have quite the increase in net position here. But the increase just from operations, which, you know, is maybe a better thing to focus on, is $207,000. And then the next page just shows the cash in both of these funds over the past five years. And with the capital purchases and the transfers out to capital project funds, I would say that's what's accounting for the decreases in cash here over the past couple of years, those investments into the infrastructure. Because, you know, looking at these most years, if you look at operations of the last two slides, operations are positive, you know, you have positive operating income. It's just the amount that you're outweighing into these capital assets that's causing the cash balance itself to decrease. Okay, and then the next couple of slides here, just look at everything wrapped together as a whole, just the total citywide, all of the funds, every fund we just talked about, plus the non-major ones, all of them wrapped together. And here we have the overall citywide assets. So this has long-term items, too. Now, this is basically broken out between current assets, things that are more liquid, like cash and receivables and more short-term things, versus your capital assets, you know, your roads, your infrastructure, equipment, et cetera. And you can see the, overall, you've had increases in your assets, but a lot of that increase is attributable to amounts that have been put into infrastructure and roads and so on. Next page, same layout, but looking at overall citywide liabilities. So I would say for starters, let's just ignore the green and the purple there in particular, and looking at the, just the red and the blue, pretty flat over the past few years, pretty consistent. The reason I say ignore the purple in particular, so OPEB, that's, the green is OPEB, that's your other post-employment benefits. Basically, it's like projected liabilities for post-employment benefits for retired employees. And then the pension liability, that's the state's, you know, para, their statewide pension plan, they project their future overall unfunded liability, they come up with a large, a large number in the billions, and then they allocate a portion of that out to every city, and they have you recorded on your financial statements. You could pay it off even if you wanted to. So it's, in my mind, it shouldn't be recorded, but we're required to record it. But that's why on the next slide, I like to exclude those, I guess I don't say it here, but I believe this does exclude those pension liabilities since they jump around quite a bit. This is just looking at assets from two slides ago versus the liabilities from the last slide, and then on a net basis, just the difference between the two over the past five years. So you can see, with everything considered, all those non-current assets and debt and capital infrastructure, you do have an upward trend over the past five years. And then finally, just two slides here showing future debt payments. So this is, the first one here is for governmental funds, this is your taxable lease revenue bonds, which is essentially your Voyager's National Park, and then your sales tax bonds as well. So both of these have dedicated funding sources, but this is the principal and interest amounts that are due each year until the payoff of the debt. And then same thing here for your business-type activities or your, essentially your water fund. This graph does look a little odd, but it's basically because there's just one lump sum payment due in 2025, and then that's, you know, based on debt that's outstanding currently, you know, at the end of the year, not including any future issuances that may be being discussed. So I know that's a lot of information. Any questions, anything you want to circle back to?
From the council, any questions for Ryan? Ryan, I have one, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Which is, there's a slide that you produced, if the ambulance receivable is uncollectible, but does that illustration use budgeted or actual in terms of the unrestricted fund balance calculation?
Yeah, that uses budgeted. So that's the kinder approach, I will say, to calculating that ratio. So if you were to use actual, I think it drops it down to somewhere around 23%, somewhere in that ballpark.
Thank you. Questions from council? No more questions at this time, Ryan?
Okay, okay. Well, I will stop sharing my screen, but if any questions do come up later, I mean, my contact information is on that last slide, and certainly feel free to reach out.
Thank you, Ryan. Excuse me. That concludes our 2024 audit presentation. I don't believe formal action needs to be taken for item three, but we will move on under new business to item four, which would be to approve the 2024 annual audit as prepared by Schlenner, Wenner, and Co. I'll move. Second.
Oh, second.
Motion by Councilors Keeler and seconded by Wagner. I don't know that, well, there's room for discussion, I don't know that it necessarily means much on how one votes, but until we're going to take some type of step forward with corrective action on some of these different topics, I'm... My feelings are that that should be where the discussion heads, whether it's the middle of the year or not. The real picture is getting more murky and clear by the day. So we certainly can continue doing business like we have, but we can't do it forever. And that's only my opinion, so. Is there any other discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, and the audit is approved unanimously. Thank you. That is the last item on this evening's agenda. Is there any other business to come before the council? Seeing no further business, we do have several community members in attendance, so I would so I would like to invite, if there's any comment, we would allow that and subject to the usual five minutes.
Hi, my name is Alan Cruz, eight-seven-four-one, East Abyspo Avenue, Mesa, Arizona. Came before the council a couple of weeks ago to let you know that I'm contemplating bringing my business here. The reason that this is important, and again, I'm originally from here. I was born here, raised here, is, you know, the thing that I found interesting about the report is he said that revenue covers your budget. Except, my concern is, is that for many, many years, decades, your revenue to determine on what you can or cannot afford has been supported by twenty-five to thirty percent of free cash from the state. That instead of utilizing those funds to help correct the issues and fix the need for the sizable amount of LGA that we, that we receive, we use it as an offset to our way of life. And so we, for example, you've approved, approved like an eighteen million dollar budget this year, but your budget is supported by four and a half million dollars from the state, which if LGA stopped immediately, which we all know that it can happen, if it stops immediately, you have a, a thirty percent shortfall. Yet, this city predominantly, well before you and through it, continues to operate as if this money is going to come in. Now, this community is not the only one that has this issue. You know, the, the discussion around LGA, you know, the, the mayor of Ely was stated in the paper as saying that it's lifeblood for the community of Ely. Well, that shouldn't be the, that shouldn't be the cross-the-board way of thinking about it. It should be the stuff that allows you to pull out of the hole that you're in to set some things right. If you had been operating without, with LGA as more of a growth fund versus a, let's keep things going the way they've been, over the last, let's say, ten or twenty years, how many homes can, you know, thirty, forty, fifty million dollars build? How much can it afford to, you know, keep a hospital here? What kind of legal can you force on the county for both St. Louis and Kooch to give you guys the special taxing, taxing district for you guys to be able to pay for the ambulance service? Which is the easiest, quickest way of dealing with that fund issue? Which I still don't understand why that isn't a thing. Now, I'm not saying that that's because you guys haven't done it or, or because they're being obstructive. I'm just saying is, is that I'd be fighting tooth and nail because the, the taxpayers of this city, you guys included, have been funding the, the ambulance service for a county and then some. Like, I would think that that would be some sort of an equal protection clause issue for taxation without representation for these, for these people. Because they're paying to offset someone else's critical services. You haven't even threatened to cut off those services in, as counter to state law to try to get this to be moved. And this isn't just a this council at this time dealing with it. This is years and years and years, and I totally understand that. But with the kind of businesses that this community needs to find to bring in the kind of jobs and, and personnel and people under the age of, you know, fifty, forty, that have families growing to grow this community, once more, there are hundreds and hundreds of houses that have to be dealt with. There's the infrastructure that goes along with that. The city engineer would probably go apoplectic and have a heart attack considering it. But those are the things that aren't being discussed. And if they are being discussed, the public sure as hell don't know about it. I'm seriously considering bringing my business here. I want to see change. I think that there is plenty of citizens in this city and in this region that also want to see the same thing. But it is up to you guys on whether you're going to be able to make the radical decisions to make the change or it's going to be the same, you know, same day, different year for business as usual, except here's the issue. Your time is up. So as is mine, is something has to be done. And I'm hoping that, that you guys will take this seriously. And if we have to cut, if we have to take it,
Thank you.
If we have to take it, we will to be able to move forward.
Can I answer some of his?
Oh, sure.
Is that okay to talk to you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So when I first got on the council here, I saw what the ambulance, amount of money that, you know, we were paying out and everything. And it wasn't to the fault of any administration fact at all. So we decided to try to get a taxing district. We spent a ton of hours trying to get the county to help us. Rainier, St. Louis County, because we're hauling in St. Louis County, too.
Yep.
The number one priority for this council and the council before was to get that fixed. But we were like talking to a cement wall. We went meeting after meeting after meeting and no help. And that's not the only place that International Falls is doing the favoritism to the people by... The library's another one. We pay for all the library. The city of International Falls, not the county.
Right.
And we don't get help from them either. The list, I could write you a list.
Right.
So when I got on this thing, you know, I knew, I saw the red in the ambulance.
Mm-hmm.
But I just want you to know, and I'm glad you want to come here, okay? I say that to you. I hope you do. But we tried, we tried, we tried. I don't know how many meetings. There were meetings when maybe you're going to twelve, fifteen meetings. Not all for that, but if you added them up for the month, it was like twelve, fifteen meetings per month. As a city councillor.
Councillor Holden, what I will tell you is, is that, and this is the same thing that I, I said the last time I was here, is you have to tell us. You, you guys have to tell us that you guys are running into brick walls.
Well, we are.
Because this group, I've watched over the last five, six months. We can fill a room. This community can fill a room. But if they don't know that the county is the problem, how can, how can you, how, how, how can they help you that way?
Um, I, I want to...
So anyway, I, I don't mean to take up time, but I would just say is that if that's what you're doing, let us know. Because there's a lot of people that just don't know.
Okay.
Because it, it, it makes me feel good that you guys have been going at it and maybe even, you know, bashing your face into a wall, but at least you're bashing. I, we need to know that, and I appreciate that that's what's going on.
When we all sat down here and the mayor before the current mayor asked us what our number one priority was. You can ask Walt, you can ask Tim, you can ask Pete. Our new mayor wasn't here yet. The number one priority was to get the ambulance thing fixed, but we got no help at all, none. And we're hauling all over the colony.
Implore these citizens to go to work for you.
Sir...
They will.
I, I want to...
Anyway, I, I don't want to...
No, you're going to, I'd like you to stay up here.
Oh, okay.
I want to interject some history into this and I will... Some of the things that Councillor Holden mentioned, I, I agree with, and supporting our ambulance is certainly one of them. But some of the, the history of it, I was actually discussing with our lobbyist, who is former Representative Eklund, was that back when we went to ALS service, the county proudly told us then that they would not entertain that idea. We immediately started losing money and that's how the city kept their books. That's how we still keep our books. And we're still having the same problem. I can say with confidence, the city of Rainier is not interested in joining a joint powers taxing district to support the ambulance. If that's changed, it's been recent. I do not think in the most recent discussions with certain county board members that they're interested in doing that. They have offered some other things towards the ambulance. And so we have continued to run that service. And now, so, one is, that puts us in an interesting spot. Maybe they don't care. It, it could be a myriad of things. But one thing I want to point out in support of the ambulance is, when we talk about Rainier as a municipality because it's the only one close by or the county that we reside in, in Kuchiching, is I want to make sure that we're not making the argument that we're owed for the entire ambulance.
No.
Because...
Their portion of it, for sure.
Because we're not even accounting for our own portion that's lost, borne on our own service to our own citizens. We will have two and a half million dollars of ambulance debt by the end of 2026. That estimation is on the city fund balance worksheets. It's subject to change. A healthy portion of that is ours that we've never accounted for.
Sure.
And so going forward, we're going to have an ambulance deficit as long as we continue on with this service. And I know from talking to, to Ryan, our auditor, that it's been discussed about using municipal levy tax dollars to subsidize the ambulance service. And I know that hasn't been popular. But nobody's coming in to bail us out in the, of the debt that we're already in. And so that's going to be levy dollars that, you know, likely lend to a payoff.
For sure.
But there's been an argument, you know, I think, made by the auditor that he's been warning us about this situation. And it's, it's where things are. I, with the LGA, because the, I feel these are two really good topics that you bring up. LGA was created as an equitable distribution program so that it evened out the disparity in communities with different tax capacities, which is why we get a lot of LGAs for a few different reasons. But one, because we don't have the tax capacities that other towns our size do.
Correct.
So if we didn't have it, we would have to levy that borne on our own citizens, which would be detrimental, which why it was created. Two or three years ago, we received a half a million dollar annual increase in the appropriation. We didn't put any of it towards the ambulance. You know, so I just want to touch, because I think the question is going to keep coming up, whether you are sitting up here or not. The, I know that from hearing from the citizens, and I'd be curious for the council, the ambulance is important. I hear that every day from our citizens and I, I know Councillor Holden does. But right now, we're footing the whole bill and we're not even accounting for the portion that, that we're providing.
Right.
So...
Well, it'd be a lot easier for you guys to budget accordingly if you were only budgeting for what's actually International Falls expenses.
And there's some options going forward that I would like to suggest as well in time. So thank you.
So anyway, just use this city, gentlemen. Use this city. They're not just here to come and bark at you guys. They can bark at others as well for the betterment of the city. Utilize them, they're ready to go to work. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Sharon Ball, one-twenty Cedar Road. I have one question and then I have a statement to read. My question is, when you guys decided to take this loan out for eleven thousand, eleven million, seven hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand last time we had a meeting, was there a bond loan that was coming due that you had to pay? So you had to pass that through in order to pay that bond loan because you didn't have the money to pay for it? Yes or no?
Well...
There wasn't any debt due?
Well, there, there was a seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar water bond due September first.
Okay, so did we have the money to pay for that?
I don't know. That's, that's a little trickier question than, I know that sounds black and white. I, I don't know. I think the better question would have been, could we have come up with the money to pay it off? And I assume that we could.
We budgeted for that in 2025. We were anticipating paying that out one way or another.
Okay, so you're telling me that, that was all there?
There were budgeted dollars in the 2025 budget.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and make my statement to you. I have waited patiently, and this has nothing to do with this, but this has to do with the systemic problems that go on in this council. And I've watched it for about twenty-eight years, okay? I have waited patiently for someone, anyone on this council to do the right thing regarding the name-calling that occurred in this chamber on February eighteenth, 2025. And not one person on the panel has even tried to investigate what happened by sending that video out to an expert. That tells me it's because you either don't care or you don't want to take the responsibility, okay? So with that said, I kind of think of things from a criminal justice philosophy, since that's been what I've studied my whole life. So I use the analogy of a tree. You've destroyed certain branches of that tree and therefore you're tainting the whole tree, okay? You have destroyed trust. You have destroyed respect for your citizens. You don't take responsibility. And you have all the power. So who is the, you, you're destroying this city. Okay. So I watched and documented at least three incidences in which you've thrown the IFPD under the bus, you've thrown me under the bus. I've watched you throw other people under the bus. Every time that you don't want to take responsibility for something, you cover your butts and you throw somebody else under the butt, I mean, under the bus. And I'm going to be doing some work on this on my Facebook page, TikTok, Instagram, every social media site that I have available to me. And there, what I've already put on there has got over fifteen thousand views. So there are people interested in what you're doing, okay? Calling me that name? I, I would like somebody to have the balls to say it to my face. But you won't. And in the past, you know, you don't allow me to get on agenda because there's censorship. Now, since you have your new charter, all of you have to decide that you like the topic somebody is going to talk about. And if it's uncomfortable for you, you just don't allow them to get on the agenda. So you give them their five minutes and then you kick them out. And yet, I watch other people get up here and you let them talk and encourage them to talk because it's what you want to hear. You don't want to hear what you don't want to hear. So... That was my main point. I wanted to know if anybody had the balls to say anything to my face, to admit who said that on the video, because I'll tell you what, I'm ready to have it sent out. And if that's my time, stay tuned. I invite all of you to go on to my Facebook page because I'm... I invite all of you to go on to my Facebook page, because I'm going to be hitting so many things that you're not telling people, and I'm going to expose this council, and I'm going to work so that you don't get elected next time, because you don't deserve to be on this panel. And shame on you for not having the balls to tell...
Thank you, Ms. Ball.
I got to go to work, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Hello?
Good evening. My name is Joe Cantor, and I'm from 1607 13th Avenue West. Apparently, there was a decision made by the City Works to use the dirt and clay around the water treatment plant and use it to cover the dump. Was this dirt, clay, built with FEMA money to protect the plant during flooding and possibly future flooding? My understanding is that the material was hauled here from southern Minnesota in order to get the right type of soil for a brim. I was told that they reason given too much time to mow, but they still have to mow the area anyways, and now, the plant isn't protected. Are these the type of decisions that could cost us more money in the long run? This would be a good question to ask. If we're, maybe, after all the storms we're having with flooding going on in 2022, I believe it was, and, you know, we got a brim, and we don't have it right now, are we going to be protected, or city water going to be protected or not?
Well, thank you for the question, and a couple different answers, and then I'll probably invite Ted Brokaw, our Director of Public Works, up. I think you're referring to there was a levee or a dike or whatever, a berm built around the water plant at one time, which was not, it was temporary in nature, so because it was not engineered and it was in an emergency setting, there was no warranty from the powers that be, meaning the federal government or FEMA, because they, it was temporary in nature. So, it was not, there was no point in leaving its stay, I guess. As to where the fill was hauled or any of those things, I would, I would relay that, but my belief is that some of it did end up for surface material or closure of the city's demolition landfill. Now, I'm looking at Jason and Ted, that in the new water treatment rehabilitation, I think that there is some things that are being addressed in regard to a future flood. One would be the raw water intake gate that does not currently function. One of the issues during the flood of '22, three years ago, hard to believe it's been that long, was that when the surface level of the water becomes high enough, it then gravities into the water plant, and when you can't shut the manual shut-off in that system, the water plant could be inundated, even if it was protected with a dike. So, it's a bit more complex. Jason or Ted, with the rehabilitation, is there a plan to build another, is the term levee or dike, I don't know what it is?
The berm that was built in 2022 was built by the Army Corps of Engineers, and part of the deal was, it had to be removed, since it was not certified, it had to be removed within 30 days of the flood event being moved. The clay was hauled, was found and dug up within two miles of the water plant, so it didn't come from out of town, it was, it was, it was less than two miles away, but we were required by the Army Corps to remove it within 30 days of the flood event. We chose to halt, FEMA paid to have the clear remove, we had it stored by the demo site, which the city had never budgeted any money to close the demo site, so it made sense to use that material to cap the demo site. Now, as far as a new berm, I'm working with USDA to try and get funding, we are putting some things in place to mechanically control water that comes into the plant gravity. The Army Corps is also another option, but to get funding from them for a new berm, it would take up to 10 years.
Thank you, Ted.
Up 10 years?
Pardon?
I mean, do we, I mean, 10 years is a long time, and, and our floods that we've had in the past are less than 10 years apart, and this is going to be something that we'll need to have to do before that, 10 years, and be able to protect our water treatment plant. That's, that's where I'm kind of going with this.
Thank you. We certainly want to make sure that your concerns are heard and want to get the right information out to the residents of the community, so, thank you.
Okay.
If there's no further comment at this time, and no further business to come before the council, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
I just wanted to make a closing.
Thank you, Emma.
So, first of all, I want to thank Ryan Schmidt, who was online until I booted him, he was unfortunately still screen sharing, so had to kind of eject him from the meeting, but I did want to formally thank Ryan for his audit presentation, he and his entire team were a pleasure to work with. We're very fortunate to have such a knowledgeable group of CPAs that oversee our audit every year. Ryan brings a lot of knowledge and leadership to his team in the specialized accounting field of municipal finance, so I really wanted to formally thank Ryan and his, his team over at Schlener Wetter. But what I primarily wanted to address is a concern that I've seen circulating for a while now. There have been both insinuations, both spoken and unspoken, that public funds were somehow misappropriated, or that improper accounting practices have been taking place, and I want to reiterate that the audit found no such wrongdoing, and continuing to suggest otherwise or allowing that impression to stand uncorrected is not just misleading, but it's harmful. When the record isn't corrected, it fuels a narrative that's not based in fact. There is a kind of rhetoric that undermines public trust, it spreads suspicion where there is no evidence, it veers into a very dangerous territory, whether that's the intention or not. This kind of rhetoric and propaganda undermines confidence in local government finance and misinforms the community, and it risks damaging, damaging reputations without cause. We owe it to the public to deal in facts, not insinuations. Transparency is critical, but so is accountability for how we speak about our community and those who serve it. I just want to formally thank the council for your commitment to honest, respectful dialogue with regards to our city finances. I hope with everything that everyone heard today, that it'll put some of these rumors and false insinuations to rest. When we know better, we do better as a community, and I hope that now, people have heard the same information from a third party, which, over at Schlener Wetter, we can move forward and stop this part of misinformation. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. I would like to add to that briefly, that I would agree with you, Emma. I have talked to Ryan and about that topic, and for those of us that are elected, that if we were aware that there was some instance of, of misuse or wrongdoing, it would immediately become something that we would have to act on, and I have reiterated, whether I've been questioned or not by constituents or anyone there else, that I'm not aware of that, and the audit has once again revealed a clean opinion. So, I would just like to echo that, that if there's any concerns, they would be about ultimately what is the council's authority and how funds may be spent, but certainly, there's been no findings. So, Emma, thank you, that's a good input, and to the council. So, is there any more business at this time to come forward? Have a good evening, everyone, this meeting is adjourned.